The zoning board of adjustments meeting for Monday, February 3rd, 2025, and it is, oh, let's see, by my, it's 1:32. So I need to establish that we have a quorum, and it looks like we do. And let's see, that's item number one. But I'd like to introduce a new member first, read into the record, and we have a new member today, attending today, Mr. Mason Brooks. Hello, Mason. And that being done, I'll go to item number two, public comment.
We had nobody signed up.
I'm sorry, do what?
They have no one signed up.
Oh, no one signed up.
There was no one signed up.
No one signed up. I suppose I still need to read this sentence into the minutes. All right, Mr. Attorney? Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda item, on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium. Address comments to dice begin by stating their name and address or single member district and limit all remarks to less than three minutes. Is that three minutes or less? Should that be changed?
Up to three minutes?
Oh.
It may be up to three minutes, but yeah, I think we're good.
She listens.
Yeah.
We can double check it to see if the language is correct. It should be standard language, just like we do on every board meeting and council meeting, but we'll, we'll double check it.
Thank you. My English teacher would be proud of me.
Mm-hmm.
Bless her heart. All right. Item number three, review and take any action related to the minute records of the regular meeting held Monday, December the 2nd, 2024. All right.
I make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
Okay. Any comment from the board? Mr. Brooks will abstain from it because he wasn't here. So we have, you have any comments?
No, sir.
Come on.
I heartily approve of the minutes of the December meeting.
All right. We have approval, had a vote second, now we're going to have a vote. All in favor say?
Aye.
That is four, five, oh, thank you. Item number, hold on a second, guys. Item number four. I have a comment to make on item number four before we start. Should I go ahead and read item number four in before I make my comment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Appeal of the planning director's interpretation present to section 206 of the San Angelo zoning ordinance. An appeal of the planning director's interpretation that vape and tobacco stores are not a permitted use within the neighborhood commercial CN zoning district. My comment is, as chairman, I found out about this Friday afternoon late, and I've had all weekend to think about it, and I'm not comfortable with what I've thought about. And I think we need a legal opinion on this to go in with the packet, so the, and I think we need more notice. And I think in the, in the name of fair game, fair play, sportsmanship, however you want to put it, for both parties, I request that this be tabled until we have more information and a legal opinion from either the city or the state on this. And with all due respect, Mr. Vanoy, you know I respect you, and I know, and I have a lot of respect for your ability to interpret and, and, and things like that. And I'm not, I'm not doubting you at all from that standpoint, okay? I just need more, I think, I think the board needs more information. I think I need more information on it to try these interpretations, especially on a old issue that, for a new thing, new product called vaping. And I just don't feel comfortable moving forward.
And while I, I agree and understand what, I think we should go ahead and hear your interpretation. That way we can all be on the same page. I think there is, and will, I agree with the comment that he made of just more background and research needing to be done. But at the same time, I think you should be able to pitch the-
This is not a usual ZBI.
I agree.
So I'm not schooled. I know we're a quasi judicial board, but I can't, it's hard for me to make a judgment like this.
But can we make it, can we make a call without it being even presented, or no?
Well, no, I don't think you should.
No, she is candid.
Yeah.
No, I, I think you need to go forward with the hearing and hear both sides. I mean, this is a procedure that is provided for in the zoning ordinance and actually in that little blurb that you read, section 206. That's the section out of the ordinance that actually gives the planning director the authority to make interpretations. So, and when he makes interpretations, and, you know, I'm not going to reveal legal advice or anything, but a lot of times he does come to get legal advice on those interpretations. So if the board has some legal questions as we go along, happy to answer those if I'm able.
Well, it's different. I, I thought about it all weekend.
Okay. Well, the other part, Mr. Chairman, is this hearing is to hear both sides. And so I would just caution you on considering anything outside this hearing in making your decision and allow both parties to present their, their side of the case.
Well, I, that's what, that's, that's a procedure. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
What my, I think the question was, can we table it before we go through it? And you said, I think we need to go through-
No, I, I don't think you should table it before we go forward, because this is a procedure that's provided for in the ordinance. I mean, I guess we'd want the applicant's input if, if they felt like they wanted to agree to table it, but this is part of their right to do. They've requested the appeal, so we're trying to uphold that.
I'm open to hearing both the applicant and the city.
Okay.
So also, we did not have anything in our packet for this information. So we have not seen anything. I know that the chairman did on Friday, but the rest of us have not seen, or I didn't have anything.
Did you get anything?
Was the interpretation not in the packet?
So we're kind of blindsided with this whole thing. It wasn't in our packet. We only had the agenda, the minutes for last month, and that was it.
That's definitely an oversight on our part. Should have been in there, the interpretation that was made in November for the case that we're going to hear. And that, I mean, again, I will bring that up and talk about it today if we are to have the hearing today. I do think at the end of both sides talking, you may choose to potentially table at that point or make a decision at that point, depending on what you hear and what the consensus is of, of the group.
So I guess my, my thing is to my board, the board here, that I think it should be tabled. We'll listen to the presentation, and if y'all think at the end that it should be tabled, then we'll go with that.
I, I do think since the committee hasn't been obliged to that certain information, we should hear both sides and then make that decision on how we want to proceed moving forward.
Fair enough.
Aaron, if you have your written interpretation, we should print out copies for the board right now and, and provide that.
It's, it's mute now to me. It's not here. It took me all weekend to just try to square the circle about everything, and I couldn't do it.
But that's what they're appealing from. So you need to be able to consider the written-
Well, they didn't get the packet. We need more time.
It's three pages. The interpretation is three pages. We can allow all the time you need to read it.
I need more time. Need, need a written interpretation from the legal office.
I'm-
That's what I'm saying. Let's move on.
Well, I think it's appropriate to go and make some copies of this, whether we take a 10-minute recess for me to go do that.
Y'all want to get a copy? The board want to get a copy of it?
I would like a copy. I don't know.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm a slow reader.
That's okay. Then I'd say we'd make a, take a recess. I'll go make some copies, and I'll be right back.
For the record, we're going to take 15-minute recess. Do I need to get a vote? Let's have a motion and a vote.
I'll make a motion to vote to accept the 15-minute recess.
Do they second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're in recess.
Chairman, I know you had not called us back to order, but I do want to, I did put out and did give one of these to the applicant as well today. These are just the sections of the zoning ordinance, so that approach-
Let, let's call back to order if we can.
Good.
Yeah, we're, we're about to come back.
Do you need to wait for 15 minutes in case somebody's watching?
No, if everyone's here and agreeable.
Welcome back. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. It is 1:49 PM, Monday. Mr. Vanoy, you may continue.
Thank you, Chairman. So as y'all are looking through the interpretation, there's also a packet that has the zoning sections in which my interpretation came out of. And so there's the zoning purpose statement, which is section 104, section 304, which talks about the commercial district intent statements. And you can see in there the different zoning designations. Then section 315, which is a general section for use categories. And then section 318, commercial use categories, which breaks it down a little bit further based on some uses, not all encompassing, but some uses.
When was this written?
These sections of the ordinance primarily were written in 2000 with the adoption of the zoning ordinance. I don't believe, trying to think if any of the sections may, there may have been some updates on some of the sections throughout the years. Like I can see under section 315, there's a reference to an ordinance in 2019. I'm not sure exactly what was updated. I would have to do some more research to see what was exactly updated there in that general section.
So everything here applies to this CN classification? Or all commercial?
I would say it applies to all commercial.
Okay.
Section 304 gives you what CN and other commercial zoning districts in a general way, not in a very specific, use A is allowed, use B is not allowed. It's a very general.
But, but this, what we have here applies to all general? Okay.
Yes, and this is the-
All C zoning.
This is the, the primary documents to, for a director to interpret the ordinance if there's a question of, in this case, an allowed use or not to allow use.
Okay, okay. All right, sir. Thank you. You don't mind me interrupting for some questions since we're, yeah, since I haven't had a-
So Chairman, do you want me to start my presentation? Do you want to allow the other, the rest of your group to do any more looking through, or as things come up?
Let me ask the group. You have any questions? Y'all want them?
I'm personally comfortable with the knowledge I have.
I don't have a lot of knowledge. I'm comfortable listening to your presentation, though.
Mr. Reeves?
I'll listen.
Okay.
Yes, sir, listen.
I guess I need to, have already read into the minutes what we're doing here?
Yes.
Okay. Continue.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll go through some slides. Feel free to stop and ask questions. These slides will also be available for the applicant to go back and, and explain their point of view as well and ask questions from that standpoint. So this is a case, it's an appeal of director's interpretation on a vape and tobacco-only sales as a land use in the neighborhood commercial, the CN zoning district. So it's a standalone store that sells vape and tobacco products. That's their primary land use. It came in as an application for a change of occupancy as a vape and tobacco-only store in that zoning district. Since it's a change of occupancy, that allows the planning department to check to see if it's a compatible use with the zoning district, which is what happened and what triggered this, these events. Started in September of 2024 and ultimately through today of getting to the interpretation is the director making the right interpretation for the neighborhood commercial zoning district as it applies to the land use of vape and tobacco only. My interpretation is that it's not an immediate neighborhood item. It's not meeting a routine need, and thus the CN zoning district would not be appropriate for this change of occupancy as a vape and tobacco-only use. So in the definitions, and I'll, I'll have some more slides that get more specific, that it talks about the need of the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhood, the immediate neighborhood, and is vape and tobacco a true need that allows it to be in the neighborhood commercial? Neighborhood commercial is our lowest intensity. It is our district that should be most compatible with residential living, all the way from single-family living up to apartment living, as opposed as you go through our commercial areas, it gets a little higher in intensity. Higher in intensity can mean many things, whether that's if you think about it, industrial things from the environment to heavy vehicles going through. It could be traffic. It could just be noise. It could be light. It could be signage. Could be a number of things. So in our purpose statement, that really, that first sentence really hits us very strongly. The zoning ordinance is adopted for the purpose of promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of San Angelo. It's not something that I take lightly or our staff takes lightly, is that we're trying to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. Some of this case hits on some of those things, and so we understand that can be challenging. But you can see the, the objectives that are there, promote the beneficial and appropriate development of all land and the most desirable use of land in accordance with a well-considered plan, which goes back to our vision plan, which tells us this area is going to be neighborhood, not just commercial. Usually, the neighborhood vision plan is not highly compatible with commercial, although it can be compatible with neighborhood commercial zoning. Number two is protect the character and the established pattern of desired development in each area. Prevent or minimize land use incompatibilities and conflicts among different land uses. Maintain property values by stabilizing expectation and ensuring predictability in development. And five, establish a process that effectively and fairly applies the regulations and standards of this zoning ordinance and respects the rights of property owners and the interests of its citizens. And so number five hits both sides, not only the private property owner, but yet the interest of the sitting citizens in this case, because of neighborhood commercial in the direct surrounding neighborhood.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Was that, would that would have been in the packet, I suppose? Did you hand that out today? Did y'all get, I kind of have-
Yes, that is, that is at this very top.
I got some stuff on Friday. I got to separate out here.
Okay.
So we have the three-page letter. They have, we have the-
So we're reading the code right now.
Right. That's, that's the purpose of the entire zoning ordinance from start to finish. So that's the big, big, big picture. And then as we drill down from there.
Thank you.
So here we have that intense, intent statement about commercial districts. I just pulled out the neighborhood commercial district here, word for word. So you can see through there that it talks about allowable commercial uses include a wide variety of office activities, as well as a more limited range of retail trade and services aimed toward meeting the routine needs of residents in that neighborhood. Commercial development should be low intensity with small floor areas and limited traffic generation and trade area. The character of the commercial development is compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood. The district is also intended for commercial establishments whose activities, materials, and merchandise are housed entirely inside the building, except allowed, except as may be allowed by general development standards of the zoning ordinance. I don't think there's any argument about some of these things. I would say the building in particular, in this one, talks about, it is a small floor area, and it may have some limited traffic generation. But we're not talking about a specific address. We're talking about a zoning district.
Thank you.
These zoning districts. And so that's, that's the question. What in here does this meet with the zoning district? I did also put the general commercial district statement in here, because that's also in there. This is where we believe that a vape and tobacco-only retail service stores would fit more appropriately. And it's very, very general. Since the general commercial district intended to provide opportunities for development of commercial establishments of higher intensity with larger trade area, floor area, traffic generation than neighborhood commercial uses. So it really doesn't give a lot of specifics, but it gives some, some tangibles in there possibly. Limited outdoor storage screened from adjacent residential uses may be appropriate. And so it's, it's very generic, if you will, for general commercial. We see a lot of our properties in town are zoned, general commercial zoning districts, because that's a lot of what our properties are. We also have one called CGCH, which is general commercial, heavy commercial. Some of the types of stores that are similar to this, that are vape and tobacco only, are in CGCH, probably just because of the CG nature, but they're also CGCH. So now we get a little more complicated. We get into the use categories, the general classifications of how we decide the principal use characteristics. So there's talking about the, the common functionality, the product, the physical characteristics, those types of things. And then it gets to the principal use characteristics, and it gives us this list, and it, it continues on to this slide, and I'll come back to that in just a moment. And so it kind of gives us these A through, and I didn't even look, L items to look at of whether they're, the activities can be considered principal or accessory uses. So through the application, we have vape and tobacco use as the primary use. And so we look, all right, is that the principal use? It's retail sales and service store. They're selling these products. They're not wholesale. They're selling the products. And so we looked at the characteristics, and we have to go through each of those and, and, all right, does this make sense for neighborhood commercial? And I'll come back and tell you.
That's on their application, did you say?
No, that is not on their application.
Okay, okay.
That is not on their building permit application, no.
What is on their building permit application?
It's an application for a building permit of what they are-
For retail purposes? Is that what they're putting it on there?
Yes. I got it. Somebody got it Friday.
Yes, it says under section five with this land use and-
Retail on there, it'd have been better for them.
Under section five under land use and occupancy, proposed use of land, tobacco shop, and in parentheses, retail. Through communication with the applicant, through our review system, our plan review system, they said that it would be a, a vape and tobacco-only store.
We don't have that, but continue. I only have what was presented on writing here. Retail, it says.
But generally, they applied for a general retail, correct?
Yes.
In the application process.
I believe what the process was, they requested to get electricity on at the building. The building had been vacant for a number of years. A proprietor in the past had requested a permit to change the occupancy, never finalized it out.
So are you basing it off a retail application or a limited retail application?
Maybe I don't understand your question.
Well, the code says limited traffic generation or trade area, and general retail would cover the whole thing. Should they have said retail with limited traffic?
And then through-
And then let's prove, have the proof that it's limited, or what? I mean, a general retail, and then try to go into the code here. Did they do their application wrong? Would you have suggested to them to do their application in a different way to meet this code?
I wouldn't suggest an applicant to do one thing or the other. That's their responsibility and their due diligence.
Yes, but you're the knowledgeable one on how it should be done to meet this code.
Okay.
Not for a building permit application, sir. But in this case, there was communication with the applicant on what exactly are you doing at the- But in this case, there was communication with the applicant on what exactly are you doing at the store? They said a vape and tobacco only.
And then they'd have to meet all the criteria you read out and they could say it will be limited traffic, limited retail, limited this, limited that, limited this. And so the interpretation is just general retail. I have problems with all this. At the beginning, I have problems with it. I will listen.
My question would be as well, is when you say whether it's limited or general application. If they chose to try to sell another product in their store. Is that application that they applied for limited to them having the ability to sell? Clothing, gum, candy, concessions, like anything else? Or did it specifically only say tobacco?
So I think we're getting a little sidetracked because of the zoning itself.
I think the application should have been.
Well, and, and I don't know, I haven't seen that, but the, so what Mr. Vanoy was talking about. And where it has limited in there is under. Your neighborhood commercial district has more limitations than the general commercial. And I think during this interpretation that you're explaining, we were confused.
Okay, we're building to that.
Okay.
So.
You're building off the application.
So we go through these items and make those considerations. And of course, here's the other items, again, talking about vehicles, vehicle trips, signs, house use advertised. Whether activities like to be found independent from other activities on the site. Can it stand alone? Can it not stand alone? So then we go into section 318, which is a very large section that deals with all commercial. We believe this fits under H, retail sales and service. And so under here, retail sales and service does not specifically identify vape and tobacco in one way or the other.
Do you call that silent?
Say that again, sir.
Would you call that silent?
In section 318, yes.
Okay. So the code is silent on this, okay?
I'm gonna say section 318 is, but our ordinances are not, because we do regulate alcohol, we do regulate tobacco. They're just not in this section or in this code.
Do we need to go through the stuff that's silent about it and get to the ordinance?
They don't have any application here in the zoning ordinance or at the ZBA, so I would say no, is my recommendation.
No, we don't need to go through.
That's my recommendation.
Y'all wanna listen to all this? That's, that's silent on tobacco and stuff, or do you wanna get to the ordinance? I know it's silent. That's what bugs me too. And that just bugs me now. I'm bugged. More than bugged. I'm bugged. Not right. Not right. We didn't get enough notice? We haven't had time to study? The application appears to be wrong. I just discovered that in my opinion. Move on.
So in section 318, you can see where it gives some examples, it gives lots of different examples. That's under number three, example, sales oriented. We believe this is a sales oriented business. Store selling, leasing, renting, consumer home and business goods generally intended for actual use by the buyer or renter and not for resale. Of course, we talked about it not being wholesale. Cleaning art, art supplies, bicycles, clothing, dry goods, electronic equipment, fabric, furniture, garden equipment and supplies. Gifts, groceries, hardware, home improvements, household products, jewelry, pests, pet food, pharmaceuticals, plants, printed materials, stationery and videos. And so.
Can you say that back?
I will try. And so the question.
Forest tree thing here.
The question was posed about, well, if they sold other products. I do believe there's an opportunity that if they sold other products that were a more primary use. And vape and tobacco became a accessory use. There's a good chance the, the property could be used in neighborhood commercial.
So to clarify, kinda like a convenience store that's directly across the street. That typically sells malt beverages, concessions, candy, chips, vapes as well.
I would say it'd be very questionable. I'd be, it'd be very questionable if a new shop came like that into neighborhood commercial. We would have to look to see which one of these items are they doing? Now, since that one's been legal non-conforming, there's nothing the city can do with that property across the street. This property came in for a process that allowed the city to evaluate, what are they doing?
But because it changed from a original convenience store to another entity, back to another entity. The building stayed the same, the business changed.
Right, the city of San Angelo, we have no business licenses. City council said for building permits items, they can stay vacant less than two years and keep their occupancy and not have to change that. And the zoning ordinance in section 604 says if you are vacant and not using that land use for 12 consecutive months, then you lose your non-conforming.
So basically, the convenience store across the street has the upper advantage because they haven't changed names or changed entities. Whereas they're doing this pretty much the same thing across the street. And because it technically changes hands from a car salesman place to a, back to a now official vape shop. Then it.
Right, and that.
Puts a loophole in there that even though that the people across the street are selling the same exact thing.
I would respectfully disagree, because they are different. A vape and tobacco only retail sales, only sells vape and tobacco, they manufacture the vape there, they want it together.
Alcohol license and sold malt beverages, would that make it any different?
We probably would not allow that in that zoning district, is.
But it's across the street that's still allowed in the same zoning.
It is not allowed in the CN zoning district. It is allowed as a legal non-conforming use that has not been evaluated because they have not done a process. That allows evaluation by the city. To see if the zoning district is compatible with the land uses, not products they sell, land uses, is it a land use?
But is it because it changed hands?
No.
Because it has been occupied and hasn't gone.
Changed hands and then went vacant and then went to a different business.
Had nothing to do with property sale, who owns it, it's just vacancy and land use and business use. So even properties that have been under the same ownership for decades and they choose to lease to a new person. That has a different building use or a different land use, they would have to go through that process.
Does that, does that trigger an inspection of the building?
Yes, it does. So here is my analysis. I do not believe that it meets the intent statement for neighborhood commercial as a need for the neighborhood. Under the general use categories, the actual or projected characteristics of the activity in relationship to the stated characteristics of each use category. I don't think it meets that. I think this has a very specific customer type for this activity that goes to vape and tobacco. Doesn't mean that they're different than anyone else, but it's a very specific customer type, and that's one of the things we look at. Hours of operations tend to be longer for vape shops than other normal, small-scale neighborhood commercial. We know signs for vape shops in our community and our community specifically can be challenging. And so that's a thing that we evaluate. How the use advertises itself, it specifically advertises itself to a younger generation. Whether that be teens, young adults or something, it does not advertise to all. And they know that, because that's what their demographic is. And whether the activity is likely to be found independent of other activities on the site. We know that we have shops that are vape and tobacco only shops that stand up by themselves. So we know it can be found independently. It does not have to be packaged with some other type of land use. So each of those are not congruent with neighborhood commercial, but they do fit within the general commercial districts. Neighborhood commercials should mesh with the surrounding neighborhood. History within our community shows that signs, hours of operation, characteristic customers. And whether the products can be sold independently of other activities can be presented as evidence that it does not meet the neighborhood commercial zoning district. And then the last on section 318, commercial use categories, we do believe this is a retail sales and service business type. However, the general use category points to more intense which, use which fits the general commercial zoning district. To protect the public health, safety and general welfare of the citizens of San Angelo.
Question. Would you agree or disagree that this type of business would generate limited traffic, since it's such a certain subset?
What do you, what is your definition of limited traffic?
Well, you, you, your definition of who's gonna, of the generational group that's gonna hit it, so if that agree with that, consider, would that be a limited traffic? That's part of section 304? A, in an commercial district, limited traffic generation?
And it being near a college?
Would you, is there gonna be a lot of car traffic created by this?
Traffic.
You think there'll be a lot of foot traffic? So it says here in the deal, limited traffic generation, it doesn't, it doesn't talk about foot in specific.
Well, traffic generation is all modes of traffic, foot, bike, vehicle.
Well, it's, okay, is that the way it's been? Is that what it was in 2000?
I think that's been the way it's been for a very long time.
Agree or not agree that it's a, it's a limited traffic generating type business?
I don't think I can agree that it's a limited traffic.
I didn't expect you to, but that's okay. I asked the question. Thank you.
So here's just a couple of images of some other shops. We know that these shops tend to go a little crazy with their signs at times.
Is this shop gonna do that?
The evidence that we have based on vape and tobacco only shops would point to yes. We don't know until they make an application for a sign application.
I see. So that wouldn't, that would be in violation?
I think there's a couple of violations there, yes.
With the sign, okay.
It also points to that these signs are not really, they're, they're marketed to a certain age group typically.
So this is moral?
Say that again.
This is a moral complaint, moral, we're, we're doing the moral thing here. It's legal, right?
In some, in some aspects, yes.
The, the vaping is not outlawed, it's, it's allowed.
If you're of a certain age, you can purchase the products and use the products.
Got you, so that, that's up to them to ID the folks that come in there.
Yes, and.
And if they violate that, who's overseeing that? Is there, is the tobacco board, is there a board, is there a? Okay, thank you. So just seeing where we are here, that's all.
I, I honestly, I think that the signage, yes, we can agree to disagree or, or contemplate if it actually came up. The projection and things like that. My main question is, is I know this, where this property is located and it's like two blocks.
But remember, it's not about the property location, it's about the zoning district. It's not about a property location at all.
I understand. I, I completely agree with you on the zoning district. Again, just to make it clear is, we're talking about the effects that it has to the public. And the foot traffic and who is it?
And these are over a half a mile away and in the CGCH district.
Right, but I also live half a mile away from there, so it's not just from the college. It's in the Santa Rita school district. The school is pretty much in the same vicinity.
So we should be restricting them more.
I don't see any foot traffic in that picture.
Okay, so I can, we can agree to disagree. I don't disagree with you. I don't have that knowledge or the ability to make the law of where those are located. My question is, is they're already located there. But because they're early, already located there and both of these actually back up to either a church. One of them does, I think now it's bought by ASU. And the other one backs up to residential as well. They are even, they are just as close, if not closer than the property. I don't, it's not about a.
I understand.
Agreeing and disagreeing.
When we're talking about zoning districts and all of those zoning districts that you're talking about are CGCH, they're not actually zoned residential. Now, they have some legal non-conforming uses and at some point they may change.
So I, in my opinion, I think that we should leave it up to the, I think that if we make a decision today. That we are opening ourselves up to make a precedence for all of them to change forward. And it, it's almost like creating a law. Like we, we do this and then it just sets this precedence for anything that's in that non-conforming. Even though it's half a block away or 50 foot away from that considered ordinance.
That is the charge of the zoning board of adjustment is to evaluate our zoning ordinance. And to see if someone should be allowing an exception out of our zoning ordinance based on the law.
Based on your interpretation.
Correct.
I think based on all of our interpretations of the law and basically at the end of the time, I don't wanna make that interpretation of the law. Especially when, just from my own personal knowledge, across the street was an Eskimo hut at one point in time. That sold alcohol, that you drove through and picked up and you could buy vapes. And then across the street from that is a convenience store that you can buy vapes and alcohol. My only concern is legally, is that in the verbiage, it doesn't specifically. Say those things about vapes and alcohol. And I think that's where we get into that legal question of interpretation.
Which.
And I don't wanna, I'm not comfortable making that decision.
Process of allowing the director to do that, that's the democratic process to allow the applicant to come and make their case.
And that's our job of saying that we, we don't, I don't, it's not that I don't see it your way, I just. From a bird's eye view, looking around, I don't wanna make that interpretation of the law when I'm technically not a lawyer. And I think that would be up to city council to vote on that. And I honestly think the people of our, that we represent should have a say so. And if a facility is gonna be put there and able to sell it or not. I mean, I know we do that the same way on other things and they come back and we get schooled. And understood by how the law works. I just, I don't think this is a decision we need to make independently. I'm not comfortable making it independently. I think that it should be researched by city council if they want to redistrict and rezone or redo their thing.
The 2000 conference?
Well, maybe it needs some.
Because it is a limited generating business.
I just, I don't, and me personally, and I'm not speaking for anyone else. I, I don't wanna make a vote to change something. That can purposely end up changing something for someone next door.
Well, you know, what he's talking about down the street CN, well, maybe I oughta put signage up on all their CN, LM, PN and all this. And so when somebody comes by the property, they know what they're getting into. You know, how do we know what down the street CN and loud and two blocks away?
And speaking from a business point of it too, is I wouldn't want to try to, and maybe Terry will agree or disagree. I wouldn't wanna try to sell a property, promote a property that you don't know the possibilities if someone's trying to lease it. What their lease abilities are.
Sure. So Erin, I have a question for you.
Sure.
The, and when I was on planning commission, we had, or actually y'all had given us some. They were like, break it down into CN exactly, I mean, a little bit deeper than what is on your, your paragraph here. That shows exactly what can be allowed by right in each district. Do you still have those somewhere?
We did look for those and we were not able to find those to see, see if there had been any previous interpretation. About the same zoning district or the same use and we were unable to locate anything.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my biggest question for you would be. Since the state controls tobacco usage and we have a particular item in 318 that specifically addresses alcohol. However, it doesn't say anything about tobacco. Should, should we look at long-term overall somehow rather changing the ordinance to have a paragraph for vaping?
I think that's.
Is there a state, is there a state decision about vaping in the state?
Well, I think there's always things in front of the legislature. I know vaping is one of them as well as some other industries that are associated with vaping. And I don't think that that has anything to do here. I do think planning has been working towards writing a grant for a comprehensive plan update. Which then in turn would turn into a new zoning ordinance update. Our current comprehensive plan is from 2003 and our zoning ordinance predates that. And that's usually problematic because you can get behind the times with new emerging industries and things. And what are the protections for public health, safety and welfare for the citizens and the private property owners? And how are we maintaining equity in the different neighborhoods? And that's, I think our, our zoning ordinance is deficient in some areas. Our comprehensive plan is behind in some areas and we do need to work towards that. But those are major financial considerations for our city council, for our administration to get those things done.
This is, this is quite a popular growth industry at, at the moment we're living in. I mean, those little things are popping up literally everywhere. Some are going through the legal process like this one is trying to do, some just put a sign in their window and sell. There's nothing either way. But, but I sure would like to hear, if we were the ones that were going to make this decision, I sure would like to hear what the state has to say since they control tobacco and alcohol so closely. Vaping is simply a part of it. And I would like to hear, I would really like to know what some other communities in the area are doing about vaping, if they have changed their zoning or their ordinances or made modifications to include vaping in one way or another, that we should, we could look at or we could be aware of. Not necessarily that we can make changes of, but I mean, things that we should know about, just due to the current popularity of such a thing.
And we can, yeah, take it.
Well, I do think, I do think there's always those chances that zoning ordinance items can come forward to Planning Commission, and that may be something on their radar. Right now, it has not been. Today, we're simply looking to determine if the neighborhood commercial zoning district that's already established is the appropriate district for a tobacco and vape only shop. We've already said and staff has, has agreed that the general commercial and higher zoning districts, they are compatible with those zoning districts. We're really just trying to figure out if neighborhood commercial is the right zoning district. The property owner does have by right to request a rezoning. It would take probably a comprehensive plan and a rezoning, which then the neighborhood would be noticed. That was offered and discussed with them back in October. They did not want to go down that path, they wanted to go down this path, so.
I, I just can't believe you don't think this is low intensity. I, I mean, I'm having real problems with that. Foot traffic, non-foot traffic, certain subset, 1824, 1834, I mean, that, you're saying right there that's low intensity.
So continuing on.
Let me ask you a question, who helped you with this determination? Besides staff, any, any, any other parts of the government help you with this? Fire?
I would say, yeah, what do you mean by fire?
Any outside influences coming in at all?
No, other than our legal staff, if I would ask questions to clarify some statements.
No, no one from the outside, like a group?
Are you asking from other development departments?
Of church or other thing, not involved? Getting pressure from any groups outside?
No, and I have not reached out.
Who helped you with the determination, name it that again, who helped you, who'd you talk to?
Our planning staff as well as our legal department. The city of San Angelo Legal Department.
What was the, anybody else? Part of the, is it the police, fire, anybody else?
Not at this time, because it wouldn't really be appropriate to engage them with an interpretation out of the zoning ordinance.
Did you ask their opinion?
Their opinion of, I've asked some people their opinion about how vapes interact with teenagers.
Yes, and who was that?
Personal friends.
And their data is driven from?
From their observations.
Observations, and that, do you call that an objective?
I didn't use their data to make any decisions.
But that was subjective opinion on their part?
You'd have to ask them that, I can't speak for what they did.
Does vaping, uh, less harmful than tobacco?
I'm not a medical professional, so I don't think I can answer that adequately.
I read John Hopkins off just quick, and it is less harmful by John Hopkins with some exceptions. They can do it from, after they get off the property, they can do things to it to make it more harmful. Same thing with a cigarette, they've got the filter on it, you can take the filter off of it and smoke it, makes it more harmful. They don't get into specifics, but John Hopkins says it's less harmful than tobacco, the cigarette, tobacco.
Do you have that report with you?
I've looked it up myself, I saw my doctor. Do you have the reports of what you're talking about? We're gonna get the reports until what we're talking about till now. Why do you ask me that? Why do you, why do you think it's less intense, uh, low intensity is one thing, it's gotta be low intensity. I don't know, man, somebody, there's something here going on that you're getting pressured from somewhere. And it's not just you there, and I'm not saying, there's something else going on.
If you know me, I don't.
It doesn't.
I don't bend the pressure very much.
Clear my smell test whatsoever. And there's more going on here than meets the eye.
I disagree, this is only about this.
I don't expect you to disagree.
This case and.
I'm just taking my point.
The interpretation is mine.
That's just my point.
Okay. So let me finish some of the slides.
And I don't like it one bit.
So it's just another shop, I think y'all seen plenty of those, so.
Are you anti-growth?
No, sir, not at all. I would love to get taller if any way I could.
You'd like to do what?
He said I'd like to get taller any way I could.
You know what I'd like, man, then I'm not gonna put it on public record.
This is just one example, I've got a few other examples. The heavier purple over here, CGCH, this is Armstrong, Highway 208. You can see the CN properties there on the left.
Highway 208.
Going out toward.
2108, or 208, I'm sorry, yeah, I was thinking 2108.
What does that have to do with this?
He's showing where.
I'm showing some examples of neighborhood commercial, which are shown in the lighter color. And you can see there's a couple of buildings there, a couple of vacant lots. So if I made the wrong interpretation, a vape and tobacco only shop could go there if they chose to. Here's a couple of other areas, this is Oaks going south. You can see one there just south of the CG, you can see another one off of, I think that's either Randolph or Irving, and I don't really remember, I apologize for not, actually, I'm wrong again. This is the north side of town. Below this is 19th, this is actually Bowie over here, that goes up, and you can see a couple of spots there. This is, where is this? This is out in Lakeview. You can see a couple of spots right there by an old, an older school, I don't think it's in operation, but there are some activities going on there, but. And then here, even just south of town, you can see a neighborhood commercial area there by a new residential and those areas. So some data that I did pull was just from the CDC, showing the prevalence of it. And then as well as.
Let me have a second.
Sure. I didn't think you'd be interested.
No, I'm gonna listen what CDC said. National Youth Tobacco Survey, that's all it said, was national youth, it didn't, it's just the youth.
Correct.
Yeah. I should remember once, I do remember that longer.
Highly susceptible population, someone that we would all want to watch out for the public health, safety and welfare for.
So where are their parents?
That's not for me to say.
Okay.
This is basically by ethnicity and race. And this is from the Texas Department of Health Services. Now, their date is a little older, from 2018.
Just youth only?
Well, that's from 2018.
It's still only you?
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say yes.
I think it's based on eighteen or twenty-one years and below.
Yeah, packing that stuff, okay. Did you get anything for older?
No.
Okay.
Because they are allowed to do it by right, and I firmly believe in freedom of choice if you're of age and can make your own decisions.
Yeah, well, that's fine, it's legal.
I agree.
But you're trying to stop it because of that?
No.
Oh.
I am saying that it's not appropriate for the neighborhood commercial zoning district. There are other districts in our community.
Because of this?
More than.
Because of this?
No, more than, you can see CG is much more prominent and CGCH is much more prominent CN in any part of our town, so we have more properties.
So if you had a zone in around a school zone, would there be something about tobacco products a hundred feet away, two hundred feet away, three hundred feet away?
There is for alcohol in our.
I'm not talking about alcohol.
I'm just giving you an example.
No, I know that, and the other ones, I just asked specifically on this. Would there be, if they had the proper zoning, would there be a school thing that says, nope, can't allow it because it's within? Would there be, that's what I asked.
I don't think our ordinance speaks to that.
Okay, silent again, so would that leave you making the interpretation?
Well, I think it depends on what you mean by they have the zoning.
Would there be able to be a vape shop diagonal from a school?
Again, I think it depends on what the base zoning is. If it's neighborhood commercial, my interpretation is no.
And that's all I'm, I think that's all he's trying to get, he's getting around it a little bit, is the interpretation of, we're saying, and the argument is that it's giving the ability to kids and young and neighborhood residential, we don't want to encroach or, we don't want to push that. But if somebody tried, okay, let's say the new school that's right by Diego's Burritos, which I think is Bowie now, or McGill, if somebody put a vape shop behind McGill, that's technically in that section, and it's within about fifty feet from the school.
Right now McGill is owned RS1, and so it probably wouldn't be allowed in a residential neighborhood. Now, it's on Sherwood Way.
But it's not residential, it's on Sherwood Way, it's literally fifty feet from the school.
Right, it would have to be, what is the zoning, is it CG?
But just say the zoning is okay to allow, would it be allowed?
I think his argument is, is we're gonna make an argument that it can't be near a school or we don't want to push it to young people, blah, blah.
Because that's the demographics you're using.
No, that's just an example, there's other places of neighborhood commercial. Nowhere in here was my decision based on school districts, and it's based on neighborhood commercial, which is designed to be by neighborhoods.
This needs to go to the public.
And I think if city council wants to take that up and give us direction, we're happy to bring a case forward to the Planning Commission to listen to vape and tobacco only zoning.
Erin, I want to thank you for your analysis on this, as always, you guys do great work. I think it is.
I second that.
I think it is a rather simple answer of, is this zoned correctly for what is being applied for? And your recommendation is no, simply because of the CN zoning tag, if you will. So an alternate to that would be, can we have a conversa, not us, can the business owner go look elsewhere, unfortunately or fortunately, where it may be a easier place to get the permit, to get the business spun up, et cetera? Or second option, keep the vape and tobacco, but add an additional offering of retail. It would fit easier than it's currently being offered, is that my understanding?
Yes, those are certainly possible remedies, and yes, that's, that's my recommendation is denial of the appeal of the interpretation in that neighborhood commercial zoning district.
Okay.
But what we're talking about today is your authority to use your interpretation to make a decision on CN properties, correct?
I think y'all are making a decision, did I make the right interpretation?
Okay.
I agree, I think that's the question before this group.
We're helping it, trying to break it down to how I got to the interpretation.
And my only concern is that we're speaking within the group and openly, is that I don't think that we should be making that decision.
Well, I said that at the beginning, we need to be tabled.
So because it's tobacco and vape, or because, I just think this is a question of, is it zoned correctly or is it not?
It's zoned correctly, it's, same thing is pretty much sold exactly across the street and across the street. I don't think that it is up to the, I don't think that we should be put in the position to make a decision that's going to internally end up changing something else. That should be up to city council.
And if it's. The code was randoms in 2000, I don't know what you think about that.
But they, they need to revise that.
And if, so you're right, if you make that interpretation, it will apply.
It opens, it opens, it opens up a trailway of all kinds of different.
But at that point, if council disagreed, they could bring up a ordinance amendment to address it.
Then send it to district court.
But then we table it and it puts it up to council where the people get to vote and they get to come in and they get to talk about it. If they didn't, if we didn't send out announcements, I, I'm sorry, I don't think that the people shouldn't have a word in it. They should have a say so in it.
I know you're uncomfortable about this process, but.
No, I'm not uncomfortable about it, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that I don't think that it should be just, I think we, five of us can have a different interpretation of the law.
So I think we need to.
So why should one of us make a decision on it when five of us have a different interpretation?
You shouldn't get the documents beforehand, Mr. Chairman, because the hearing, this hearing is for presenting evidence.
With the staff report?
We have a written interpretation, okay.
Are you saying that it shouldn't have been presented to us beforehand, that we're supposed to hear this today?
Yes.
The process is wrong.
Okay.
Because we're, we're not lawyers, we're not legal.
Are you ready for the applicant to present their side, sir?
And like I said, I wanted this tabled.
Okay, well, you're one vote, so.
Well, we, we will get there, but before we get into the question, I don't want to go down this path.
The city has presented its side.
I don't agree with what you're saying, how's that?
I think we can all agree to disagree, let's have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to entertain the applicant's side.
There you go, let's hear that.
Good afternoon, board, my name is Hillary Bueker, and I work with Dorado Construction Group. I am representing the owner of the property and the applicant for the zone of, or the change of occupancy. So I want to go back, I know I've lived in this world before, so I want to go back. This is, what I'm appealing is Erin's decision that tobacco and vape should not be allowed in CN. So I think this is a very simple decision. I know it seems complicated and there's a lot of stuff thrown at you. This zoning ordinance is what we're looking at. So if you'll go to Erin's decision, I'm gonna go through it and make sure everybody understands the pieces before we go any further. So I think we can all agree, and I think staff would agree, that this is retail sales and service. If you go to the zoning ordinance, retail sales and service is allowed in neighborhood commercial. What staff is trying to do is say only, they're trying to single out vape and tobacco shops and say they are different. I don't believe that is the case, alcohol is in there as well. So the reason alcohol is prohibited in other areas, there's two different ways. One is the setback from the schools and churches. The other is the county many, many years ago adopted an area where only alcohol could be sold. So there's two rules that staff has to go by when they're doing alcohol sales. Do those need to be put into the city's ordinance? That's not for us to decide when it comes to tobacco, that is a city council decision. All we're looking at today is based on, do we think this is retail sales and service? And retail sales and service is allowed in neighborhood commercial. So the first thing they put there in the interpretation is vape and tobacco sales are not a community need. I don't think that's a valid statement, I think we have seen across the city that there is a need for this type of service, they're popping up just like we've talked about. So I believe that statement is the first one that probably is just invalid in this, in this part. They've talked about the signage, the advertising and the potential traffic. The sign ordinance is an ordinance here at the city. If the other tobacco and vape shops are not following by this ordinance, that's up to the city to enforce the existing ordinance. So that should not be considered here. Everyone applies for a sign permit. If the sign meets the code, the sign ordinance and the state has said you cannot read signs. You cannot read what is on the sign, we lived through all that. All you can look at is, does the sign meet the code? So my client, just like anybody else, will have to apply for a sign permit. If they meet the rules for the sign permit, they will be granted that. So I think, again, I think signage has to be put to the side. If we're meeting code, I don't know why we'd be allowed, I mean, I don't know that it would be any different. So, um, let me go back here. One of the other statements they make is that the CN zoning district is low law intensity and small floor plans. This building is under 2,000 square feet, so I don't believe it would generate high traffic counts. There's no way to predict it. I did go and take pictures of vape shops around town at different times of day, all different times, so I would like to pass these around, I have two sets, I'll sit one on one end and one on the other. They do have the time and date stamp as well as the location I took the photo from, so these will be, some will be across the street from the actual address that's on the picture.
Well, you just said there's no way to determine whether it's slow traffic or not, I don't agree with that, but.
So the, if you'll look at those pictures, they're different times of the day, there's no more than one or two cars at each one. These function a lot like, like you were speaking about, about the use across the street, the convenience store that is now selling vape products. So, I mean, this is, it's a little silly, actually, it's that if my client would add in chips and just sell chips but have vape and tobacco on the side, they could do that. So I don't know why we're trying to cut this out of retail sales and service. This is a retail sales and service very clearly in the current zoning ordinance. Again, if the ordinance needs to change, that's a different procedure. Today, we're saying, the interpretation that was given to you states several reasons why they don't believe this fits in neighborhood zoning, but these reasons are not, we believe, valid. You know, they say the low traffic count, the signage. You know, they say the low traffic count, the signage, again, sign ordinance would speak to that.
Looks like they're about to go out of business.
Well, there's, like I said, there's, throughout town, there's vape shops. And I, I want to state that, you know, the pictures that Aaron showed where the CN zoning is around town, i- if the zoning needs to be changed, that's something staff can initiate. They can take care of it if they need to, if it's in the wrong location. I don't think this is the proper way to prohibit vape and tobacco shops. In fact, there are already vape and tobacco shops in CN zoning today. They're not old shops, they're new shops. They did not need a change of occupancy. So we're singling out a new business owner from moving in over some statements that I believe are incorrect or misconstrued to get the point across they were trying to get across. So I don't believe we should stop this owner from allowing this use that has already been allowed. The only thing stopping them is the interpretation by Mr. Benoy.
Do you have the names and businesses of those CN zoning-
Yep.
-other shops, quote unquote?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
So I've printed this out, it's a quick glance, but I did it by the zoning color, so there's only one in CN right now. Mr. Benoy's right, that several of them are in CGCH. There's one here in the Central Business District. There's some in CG, but. So, to your point, I believe that if there is a change, the City Council would have to look at it. I think that overturning this decision today would allow this shop to open up and be, you know, in business and doing what they do, knowing that across the street, there's the same type of use. If there needs to be a zoning change, then that would be a zone, an ordinance change, then it can go to City Council. It is something that needs to be studied and looked at. Today, we're not looking at that. This, this board does not do changes to the zoning ordinance. They're here to interpret the zoning ordinance and to look at if there's any, any ways to, you know, interpret it differently.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir, of course.
Oh, that's what you gave, none of it's, that's CN?
Uh, yes, sir, there's one. It's, it's actually, yeah, it's a different color, I'm sorry.
I see, yeah, okay.
It's two, there's two names, but it's-
So there's already, there's already two allowed in CN, okay. I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine. I understand.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot there, so. So from the client's perspective, I don't believe this interpretation is valid. Again, that's what we're deciding today, is, do we believe the reasons that were given in this interpretation is enough to back up prohibiting the vape and tobacco in CN today? And I don't believe it is.
Well, there's already others allowed?
If there are, like I said, if there are needed changes to the zoning ordinance, that would be a City Council decision. Does anyone have any questions for me?
You do agree it's limited traffic?
Yes, sir, but by going around to the ones, I mean, I've driven all around town. If you look through those pictures, there's some up on North Chadburn, there's some on Sherwood Way, Beauregard. I've been all over town at different times of day. There are some shops that have higher traffic, and most of them have drive-throughs. This shop, I don't believe, was applying for a drive-through. So there are Smokers, Smokers Oasis, I'm sure you've seen them around town. They have drive-throughs, they have higher traffic counts because people are just driving through. Same with Headhunters, I believe they have a drive-through, so. Even Lifted, the one that was shown there with the black and blue graphics, drove by there a couple of times during the day. I mean, you're welcome to drive by any of them, but my route from my office to home is on the south side, so it was the F8 Spectrum Vapor Maven, a couple of them repeatedly. I would see the same car most of the time, and so I'm assuming that was the shop owner or the people.
So you're not interested in tabling it?
No, sir, I'm not. In favor of the-
Now, let's see, our vote deal here is six, so we need, what, how's that need to work? One, one, explain that. I'm sure you know how.
Yeah, I'll let Brandon.
I'm sure I can. To overturn the Director's decision, you would need a vote of six.
And need to table it, and what?
So, the ordinance allows for thirty days, which I think is today, I think the appeal was filed January third. State law allows up to sixty days, so I would say if the applicant's not interested in tabling it or allowing more time, then-
No, we're allowed seven on the board. If we had seven on here, what, what, how many, how many do we have?
You'd still need six to overturn the-
Yeah, the CBA has a higher vote needed.
So one, one's going to not work for you.
Yes, sir.
You have to have six. You're aware, aware that, and you're, and you, and your clients know that, and all that.
Yes, sir, but, you know, we have a business owner that's looking to-
I don't know what it's going to be, but I'm just making sure that you understand.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, that's what, that's one main point when coming up here, I want to make sure everybody understands, you're deciding if, in what you read and what Aaron presented, if vape and tobacco is allowed in CN. And I, my point to that is, it is, it's retail sales and service. It doesn't specifically prohibit it. There are specific provisions that prohibit certain things in the zoning ordinance, and you can read them in the sections that were provided. But just so that you're aware, also in CN zoning, you could allow, like, mechanics, I actually also have the property that we're talking about through the years, and I'll just kind of hold it up, but this, to me, is higher intensity. So this is the car lot that it was for all those years. So we're actually, I believe, bringing a lower intensity shop here than what was originally there, so. We are asking that you overturn the Director's decision and allow vape and tobacco stores in CN zoning. And then, again, if later a decision is made that they need to redo the zoning ordinance, it can be done. But this specific, this interpretation was specifically written for my client. So they were, they were singling out at the, for this one person, at this time, that's when it became singled out, so.
Okay. Did they hire you before they decided to do this, or after?
Uh, no, sir, after they got the interpretation.
After, okay.
Yes, sir.
Should have hired you before, huh?
Well, and again, had they put just retail, I told him, I said, had you put retail sales and service on there, the city doesn't go into retail sales once they're open and see what's going on. So I don't know why they intentionally tried to single this person out.
So are you stating that the application was mis-
Well, I mean, they were just telling the truth. They were writing on there what they were, they were retail.
Was the application done properly?
Yes, sir, I believe it was.
Okay.
They just got a little bit more specific than they needed to be, and that led to this interpretation, which then is not allowing them to open for business. They've met all the other stipulations. In fact, they had been going through the process, and they had met the parking requirements, and they had done all the things. The last check they came in to get their change of occupancy, they were told that they now could not open. So they were already going through the city process when this happened.
And you, you would advise them beforehand to do what with the application? You said they went into a little picture?
Well, I just, I told them afterwards, had they put just retail, it would have gone through, this wouldn't have even been an issue. This is, retail sales and service is allowed in CN zoning. So again, if they add chips-
Is that an agreeable statement? Can I go over there, is that an agreeable statement?
Or if they sold merchandise such as t-shirts or something else?
I think limited retail sales and services are allowed in CN. I don't think all retail sales and services are allowed in CN.
They are. I mean, that's, that's the discussion here.
What is the, what was put on this application?
That's, well, no, they put, they technically did put retail services.
Okay.
Which if you look in the 315, I believe, that he printed out, I mean, it talks about all retail, this is a personal service. Now, again, to Mr. Cortez's point earlier, is this, you know, is this a moral decision? That's not the decision we need to be making. We are making rules based on the facts here. I mean, I, you know-
It's my understanding whatever we rule today is going to provide from here on out on CN zoning.
I'm sorry, do what?
It's, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
It's my understanding that what, if we, if we vote against you today, it will, it will open the door up, all CN zoning, they won't, CN zoning, they won't even look at vape shops in CN zoning.
That's correct, yes.
So you're opening the door up for all future folks to come in to try to put a vape shop in a CN zoning, and you, and you saying it's okay, if we rule against you, that kills it, right? Down the road, do they still come back, we have to go through this process again? You just automatically say no?
That's what I'm not comfortable with.
Yeah, I'm not either.
I just don't want to open it to make abdominal effect. I don't disagree, and I see both sides, and I totally understand it. I just don't think that should be a decision that we're making.
We're making a global decision here for future CN zoning.
Well, you're making it specifically for my client today.
Yes, I know.
But with us making it specifically for your client today, will have an effect on every client that has an applicant.
Potentially unless council decides to make a change to the zoning ordinance.
So if we were to move it back to council to let them do that, then it would-
The council does not have the ability to do what we're doing here today. This is, this is delegated to this board.
Right. I understand you want to know yes or no if you're going to get that approval today. What I'm, my concern is, is that if we give you a yes or no, we open ourselves up to a plethora of yes or no's from that specific zoning.
No, it, once, if you, if you approve the denial today, or, I'm sorry, I made that all messed up. If you deny the appeal, then forever, these guys will be limited and not be able to be in CN.
Correct.
If you approve the appeal, then this man, this gentleman can open his business, and further, the City Council and/or planning staff could take a motion forward to actually change the zoning ordinance, which is the way it probably should have been done in the first place. If there is a need for a rule, it should have been done by a change in the ordinance, not by an interpretation that does not give good explanation to why it should be prohibited.
Is it an undue hardship to consider other retail services to go along with this vape and tobacco?
It's a very small shop.
I'm not, I don't disagree, I mean, I don't-
It's like fourteen hundred square feet.
Okay.
So it's a very small shop. They could probably put, they're, I mean, who knows, they'll probably have other merchandise in there.
Is it an undue burden to the-
Well, and who's to, I mean, again, we're deciding what, you're trying to get into what percentage, like, there's one rule.
No, no, I'm just asking.
We are retail sales and service. I don't know how else to put that. It is retail sales and service, and it should be allowed.
Okay. The reason it's across the street is because they offer other stuff. Yes, it's a convenience store.
No, now it's a vape shop, totally. It was a convenience store, that is correct. If you look at the signage today, it's in some of the pictures, it is a vape shop.
But they sell alcohol.
Okay.
They sell other things, is the point of that.
And they sell candy. So that's what I'm saying, is are you going to sell t-shirts?
Well, and I can't answer, I can't answer that question. I'm not the, I'm not the owner. But again, your, your decision is, and just from my perspective, should be, this is retail sales and service. This is retail sales and service by the code.
But you're telling me the same thing, is that you can't tell us what is going to be done, and I'm telling you is, if it's retail services, and it's not just what they're specifying it is.
Well, it doesn't matter what they're specifying.
But it does matter.
It, it doesn't. Retail sales and service is a whole group project.
We got it, we got it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, move on.
Maybe answer your question.
She wants us to determine.
I, I, I understand, I was just, mm-hmm.
Now, 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 on the global picture, if we rule against them for CN, does that apply to the other people that might want to come into CN properties? Do that, do they lose the ability for the zoning?
So, there's nothing in the code saying that they couldn't also appeal that interpretation? But if it's the same set of facts, the same circumstances, and you make a different decision on that other case, it would certainly create a conflict for staff, so, yeah. I mean, I would hope that it would be a consistent determination every time, but there's nothing in the code saying that someone else couldn't come appeal it later on.
Yeah, we're benchmarking it here. Okay, that's fine. You want to do that? You're okay with that?
If what?
You, you're okay with your presentation, you want us to move ahead? Are you, are you getting close to, go ahead and finish your presentation.
No, I mean, if there's any questions, I can answer it. Again, after this, it becomes a legal matter, and so.
So I ask my original question. What is the burden of hardship on the business owner to look at offering another vein of retail?
They can, for sure.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
I mean, they can add, they can add, but, but what we're saying now is, what percentage, like, do you want them to have ten percent t-shirt sales? You, we don't have that ability. They are retail sales and service.
I don't think they're asking for a percentage of retail.
Yeah.
I don't need a percentage.
The only thing they do that is, the time is when they're asking about alcohol, and it has to be a certain percentage over.
Correct.
No, I don't need a percentage. I'm just asking, has it been considered, hey, we're going to be a vape and tobacco shop, but maybe we could also be X along with it?
Yeah, I think that's an option.
Okay.
But I think you'd still have to overturn this decision, because I don't think staff is going to let them say, I'm a vape and tobacco shop, but I've got ten percent t-shirt sales, and so.
Any more questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on, and close, we move on, we didn't have public comment, or go to the public comment first, or anything that's, no public here, we'll move on and close it, and have a board discussion amongst us fine citizens.
So I have a question for Brandon. So I understand that this is an appeal process that was on our agenda, but I also thought that that, since it was on our agenda, that all of this information should have been in our package when we received it. But when you stated earlier that it would not be, it shouldn't have been, that, so, clarify that for me.
Okay. They could have absolutely put this interpretation like they do staff reports, but the thing I'm concerned about from the chairman is, he needs more time and to do his own research and all the, the board shouldn't be considering anything outside of what is presented here and which this interpretation is one of those things. So if it was in the packet, that would have been great, that would have been fine, but outside of this hearing, you shouldn't be considering other evidence, is what I'm-
It wasn't in the packet, so I've run it blind.
Okay, but you have it now, so are, are you wanting to table it so that you can read this three-page document that we've gone over?
I said I want a legal opinion on the whole-
What legal question do you have that you want a legal opinion on?
No, just, that's what I, that was the thing I wanted to table it for, to get a legal opinion, get everything in front of everybody, to look at it, read it, if they have any questions, they could ask questions. I want to look at anything anyway, it was, it was just a lack of anything to look at before we got here. We're trying to make an interpretation that took, when y'all start this? November? And y'all want to make a-
The appeal was filed January third.
And hours, hours, we're supposed to determine something that we're not skilled at to determine?
The appeal was January third, and Gary, this is part of what this board does. What do you mean you're not skilled at?
I'm objecting as Chairman that the board didn't have enough information to show up here today to make a decision, to listen to this and have questions formulated in the brain, to be able to ask proper questions. To, to what, what we look at?
What other questions do you have? We've been at it for, since what, thirty?
We needed briefed on this.
Okay, what would you like briefed on, other than this interpretation?
A legal opinion, either from the city or the state on vape.
Okay, what legal question do you have, Gary?
On, on the state, because vaping is not addressed.
We're not regulating vaping, we're regulating zoning.
We're not, when this was put in, vaping was not addressed. Tobacco is silent, it is silent.
So, where the ordinance is silent, the director makes an interpretation, which he has done.
On vape.
And on whether vaping is allowed in this zoning district. We're not regulating, like, who can buy it, or how, I mean-
But specifically, does it say vaping or alcohol in that, in the legal term, because I don't think it does, from what I read. I think it specifically leaves out tobacco and alcohol. So, I think that's where the legal question comes in, on can you, if it's specifically leaving it out.
On this for neighborhood commercial, it does not speak to vape or tobacco. That's where the interpretation of the director comes in, to fill in those gaps, to see. The interpretation is on vape and tobacco only, and so, I know it's been presented a little different, couple of different ways, but it's vape and tobacco only as the applicant, through our software system, that he's recorded, that he only wants to do vape and tobacco products only. Now, he may change his mind at some point, and we understand that.
So, if he were to submit something that said, I'm gonna sell vape and tobacco and t-shirts and merchandise and chips and candy, does-
My goal, or whatever.
I would, we would be happy to evaluate that application.
Is that going to change it from general retail to not just having a specific vape and tobacco label?
I don't want to answer a hypothetical, but we would be happy to evaluate that application.
I think, we need to be briefed on this, and ahead of time. We need to have our knowledge, go and read things and understand things of what, what's going on about the hot button item called tobacco. It's a hot button item to the public, so is alcohol, and we're making this determination on the ends only with it. There is less traffic with this. You denied that, you said it isn't, and, and my, my argument would be, show me, and I'm not gonna go there, but you, you never had any of, you never gave a plus in your whole presentation of that, and that's the reason I asked that, and you said, no, no, come on.
We, we don't have the ability through our zoning ordinance to require a traffic study of any kind, and so, we have to do the best evaluation we can with the tools that we have, and that's not the primary reason, is not volume of traffic. It's accessibility to the neighborhood and the needs of the neighborhood.
Volume of traffic created by a vector, or the traffic that's already out there, the traffic count of cars going by.
Can I make a motion?
Could I ask something?
Yes, sir, I'm ready.
In that building there, can they sell alcohol?
In which building, the-
The building that they want to occupy.
We'd have to evaluate that address to see how it fits. I have not evaluated that address to see how it fits for alcohol.
Well, she showed us where it's gonna be at.
CN should be able to sell as a package store, but we're able to sell liquor, but it'd be able to sell-
I would say the zoning district may allow that. I can speak to the zoning district, because that was what the evaluation was, not a specific address.
So, if it's able to sell alcohol, but it's not able to sell vapes? See with the, the question there?
That's, I don't think, yeah, that don't, that don't-
But I don't think we should be making that, that-
So, do we have convenience stores that have the availability for alcohol, tobacco, vapes? Do we have those in CN right now?
Right across the street.
That are legal non-conforming or allowed by right?
Yes.
I don't know, we'd have to evaluate that.
Okay, do you know of legal non-conforming ones?
I believe there's one right across the street from this said address.
Okay, that's the one that used to be Tracy Migos, and now it's that one.
But I have not evaluated every parcel that's labeled neighborhood commercial and what the land use is there.
Okay.
As presented, I can't vote against that, so, I can't vote against that.
Are we discuss, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
I am in favor, I, I, this is not a motion.
Yeah.
I am in favor of upholding the city's ruling to deny.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that says we table it.
Okay.
Because I don't think that, I'm personally not comfortable with making a decision one way or the other.
Go ahead, Brandon.
Well, I'm- My only problem with tabling it is, is what's gonna happen next month when it comes back? What are you expecting to see that you don't see today?
Then, I think that the-
More voters, more corn.
The city council, something should figure out zoning or the specifics on that application, what they're selling, the merchandise, something else, I'd-
One vote, one nay vote kills the deal.
Yeah.
So, it's just me, my vote, I don't make the whole deal.
I'm just, sorry.
There are only six total ZBA members right now. Every member of the ZBA is present. There won't be more next month. In fact, there may be less.
Well, that's, we don't know that, but right now, it's what we have, and I agree with that part of it, but-
So, there's one nay, then it doesn't go?
No, no, no.
Correct, today.
So, you, you, okay, we haven't made any motions.
Did you have a?
I made a motion to table it.
We have two motions, actually.
So, I, I didn't make a-
Oh, yours was not a motion?
No, no, that one-
I'm just discussing, I can, I can further elaborate why, but-
Right, he didn't technically make the motion, he made the discussion around.
I'm sure, I'm happy to.
Yeah, go ahead.
It seems to me that the burden of proof or hardship on the business owner to add an additional line of retail has not been fleshed out, one. Two, I, I don't know if vapes and tobacco sales are not a need in the community, I don't know. This is a, what is zoned for the property that is coming in, and I think, if it's me, I think it's a semi-easy fix to add another line of business to satisfy the CN. I'm not anti-vape, I'm not anti-tobacco, but what I'm hearing is, a simple fix is an additional line of some type of retail. Is that, Erin, is that-
Are you guaranteeing that?
Do what?
So, I, I know you're saying you're not guaranteed.
No, no, the city is not guaranteeing they would approve it by adding a single line. They're saying they would reconsider it.
That's fine, that beats a no.
And alcohol is allowed here, so, that's just, I want to make sure you understand, yeah.
So, my-
Are you sure you don't want to stay?
No, it's fine if that's where the board is headed.
All right.
I mean, it, it's your decision, this is the-
Well, we don't have to say that, that, that makes this kind of voting, one kill the deal, that's what bugs me about this kind of stuff. There's never a full board.
I just think that an alternate location in a differently zoned area would meet this occasion.
But at the same, but at the same time, the lease amount, the traffic flow, the location might not actually be appealed to whoever that owner is, and that's coming from just the significance, whether you're putting it on such and such street or College Hills and Sherwood Way. If it's technically was zoned that way before, that's how you leased it, and that's how it's understood, and everyone across the street, I mean, it opens it up, I don't think they should have to move to another part of town when it's pretty much the same zoning.
Okay.
And it's right across the street, doing the same thing.
Now, I'll remind you, there are other alternatives still, such as a zone change.
Sorry, I get you.
There are other alternatives still, such as a zone change, or to alter the nature of the business.
Yes.
We're not making a decision on one property here today, this decision affects hundreds of properties.
Right, that's why I'm not comfortable making that decision.
And if there's alternatives available to one property, then, you know, we need to worry about the hundreds of other ones.
See, that's the problem, Mr. Brooks, making a decision on this particular property that's presented to us, but it's going to affect all the other CN zonings in San Angelo. That's my problem with it. If it was just here, this thing, we could debate all day long, but whatever decision we make is going to affect all the other CN zoning, and I'm just not comfortable with that.
Well, specifically the CNs-
But vaping was not around when this was put in, is my main reason. Cigarette, standalone cigarette shops in San Angelo, Texas, tobacco shops, how many have ever tried it? A couple, maybe? So, I don't know. It's, it's really, it's real, vaping is, is tobacco, no doubt, but there's evidence that it's less harmful, there's all kinds of evidence, and when these were put in the CN zoning, vaping wasn't even known about, just like smartphones were. Well, I guess, smart, no, smartphones, two thousand and five. But, that's my problem with it. That's why I wanted to table it, and vaping's a new thing, and cigarette, cigarette tobacco stores, standalone, were never probably even aware of, because in San Angelo, with the population, and retail, everything else, selling cigarettes, it didn't stand a chance, standalone cigarette shop, cigar shop, whatever. And this is a different beast, and this is what bothers me. And, it, it, this needs to be re-looked at, needs to be tabled, there's just so many things there that I just am not comfortable with. It's new technology, if you will, to smoke.
Sure.
And that wasn't available then, when this ordinance was put in. And that's what, that's, that's my, that's what bothers me. New technology has come along, and we're interpreting new technology with old codes, and it just, I, I'm not-
But we do that all the time.
No, we don't.
Yeah, we do.
No, what?
Yeah, we do, they sell cell phones, they sell-
No, 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 that's boring. If this was just a five-foot encroachment, or whatever, you know, it'd be one thing.
I disagree. Retail sales are retail sales, and it doesn't mean you have the right to tell me what I can sell.
Well, it's, it's a limited-
It's retail sales.
It's a limited traffic, new technology.
Ah, it has nothing to do with it.
It can stand, it can stand on its own by selling one thing. You see the car lot, when it was before, how long has this building been vaping? This is new technology.
That's not a part of the code either.
Our evidence is two, more than two-plus years.
Well, because it didn't have anything to do with, when the code was written, the new technology.
But my understanding is, this is only hinging on tobacco and vape only, emphasis on only.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
So, if it were another vein of retail-
I agree, that's why I think it's a table.
A convenience store, or something else, an Eskimo, I'm just making things up, this in essence would be a non-starter, and we wouldn't be opening ourselves up to painting with a broad brush. If vaping, if vaping was a separate category, I would have, absolutely not a problem, but retail sales is retail sales, and it could include whatever they want to sell other than tobacco and alcohol, because you have to have special permits for that. You could sell, you could sell lumps of rocks off the streets if you want to, it's called retail sales. Vaping is, because vaping has not been categorized into tobacco and alcohol, or, or any other category, vaping is retail sales. Therefore, by the zone, it's allowed. I, I, I don't like it, but, no, don't get me wrong, I, I don't like it, my, my gut tells me I should be agreeing with, with Mr. Vanoy, but if you want to go by the code, by the spirit of retail sales, I'm, I'm against it.
Well, yeah, but it's, but rocks are new technology, but this is new technology, and they gotta have a little common sense, you gotta have a little common sense in it.
Disagree.
You don't think vaping's new technology?
Nope.
Why that?
Because it's been around for years and years and years.
Not that many years. How many years has vaping been around?
You tell me, you're making the argument.
No, not that long, it's a new thing. How long's vaping been around? Two thousand and fifteen?
I mean, I don't participate, and I don't see what that has to do with their ability to sell it.
But it's not, it's not a moral issue with me whatsoever.
You could, you could-
I think as we see in the-
How long has vaping been around? You said years and years and years.
In the modern form that we see today, in the early two thousands, it came around as electronic cigarettes.
Right.
Vaping of different materials.
No, no, we used water pipes pretty heavily when I was there.
Not these, have been around for decades.
But they weren't electronic, but go ahead.
So, there are, I would say, in the early two thousands, in the form that we see today.
Okay, this code was written before that.
Correct, it was written in two thousand.
Because we didn't have electronic.
Most of it was written in two thousand, that's correct. It's had some updates, but again, it has not updated any language on vaping and tobacco only specific.
Right.
There are exceptions, there are exceptions in retail sales and services that says there, these are not, although they're sales of things, they're still exceptions. It, again, does not list vape and tobacco in those exceptions. Just saying that for full disclosure, I mean, that, you'll have that paper in front of you. Again, as Ms. Bueker has said, I mean, it's a decision of, did I make the right interpretation to say they should be not allowed in neighborhood commercial, or no, the interpretation was wrong, they are allowed in neighborhood commercial?
Letter of the law. But you have two that are running in town CN? Why's that?
I, I'm not sure what the addresses are. When Ms. Bueker made her presentation, she said they did not need change of occupancies, and so, it's possible, unless I misunderstood that.
I don't know, that was my-
Do you want to make a natural motion?
Yeah.
As a, we're, let me, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. I was gonna say, my research into the property is on Sherwood Way, they're in a strip center that is owned CN, so my assumption is, I do not have evidence to say they did not need a change of occupancy. My assumption is they did not need a change of occupancy. Most of those strip centers have power throughout the whole facility as they're leasing those properties, so this-
Was there, was there houses behind it?
Yes, sir, of course there are.
Several set up.
Well, and I, I just want to say that, you know, I've been involved with the planning department for a long time, and tobacco, we've always considered retail sales and service. So, this interpretation changed that. Before, when we were there, tobacco and alcohol were all retail sales and service. Alcohol is specifically limited by the area, the boundary that was approved by the citizens of Tom Green County. So, tobacco has always been allowed in CN zoning. Mr. Vanoy's interpretation is what's changed that. So, that's why we feel it's singling out vaping.
Well, I said that at the beginning, so, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You still want us to continue, then don't want to table it? All right, unless you're motion. Are we, oh, excuse me, Lord, is there any more discussion? Good, I think the discussion has been very good. Ms. Rivas?
Has the first motion?
I'm here, I'm ready. So, Mr. Brooks made a recommendation, I asked him if he wanted to actually-
Chairman, did the first motion from Ms. Galindo fail?
No, we haven't, okay, I'm sorry.
On the table?
He made a similar, so that's, he actually did that before I did, so, his motion will be voted on beforehand. He actually made the one about-
No, he was just discussing, no, he was just discussing.
Okay, and we do have a-
He actually said a motion.
So, we have a motion on the floor to table it.
Can I mention one thing about tabling? So, in, in the ordinance, it says, appeals of written interpretations made by the planning director shall be taken to the zoning board of adjustments within thirty days of mailing of the interpretation. It says it has to be taken to the board, so here we are, we've taken it. The only other time limitation I find is in the state law, which says that a decision has to be made not later than the sixtieth day after the date the appeal is filed. So, it's unclear to me, from our ordinance, whether that thirty days, we have to make a decision today, but it is clear that we at least have to do it within sixty days. Again, because the applicant, they're trying to get their client in business, I would strongly encourage the board to make a decision, but I think there is some room for tabling if you want to do that, but it's not entirely clear by the code.
You can withdraw, or you can put a date, just the third.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Draw, she's withdrawing the motion?
I'm not gonna put a date on there. The date that's gonna be specific, I don't want to put that on there. I, I withdraw the motion.
I think it's been vetted and worked over pretty hard, so, if I let, I'm ready, if this board discussion's over, I'll entertain the motion.
I move that we support the city's recommendation to deny based on the tobacco and vape use only designation in a CN zoning.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
There's a second. Okay, we're gonna go to the vote. Any more discussion, more? I'll take it to the vote. All right, y'all heard the motion? I'll go, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. What does that mean?
It failed.
Now what?
That means it failed, so, code says the concurring vote of six members of the board is necessary to reverse an order requirement decision or determination of an administrative official, so you have to have six to overturn the director's decision.
So, that means?
So, could I make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, you can make another motion, mm-hmm.
I'm glad I don't have to make one. I'm, my motion wasn't tightly-
Yeah, that's why, because I said, I don't think we're all gonna be in agreement. I think we-
Another motion?
So, point of order, Ms., what becomes of a nay, then it would, one nay on this next vote in favor of, I guess, the, the business owner, one nay would kill that, correct?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so you have to, but we have to all vote the same, and the right has to be totally agree with her to-
Oh, you did?
It still didn't pass.
It's okay.
Yeah.
It gets confusing on the voting, especially for newer members.
So, do we make a motion?
My table in at the beginning, we're not, we're not skilled at this part of it, this
So the motion was to uphold the city's decision. So if you voted in favor of it, it would have been to uphold the city's decision. If you voted in opposition, it would have been to the other way.
Correct.
So the, the other motion that I would, that would go in the favor of my client would be to overturn and accept the appeal, just so that everyone's clear and understands what we're, what we're talking about. Again, that's just for your information. I want to make sure everybody understands. Thank you.
Okay, where do I go? Uh, did I hear a request for a break?
Yes.
I have a request when board members take a fifteen-minute break.
Couple minutes. Doesn't even need to be fifteen minutes, like five.
It is three twenty-two.
They pay overtime on this?
Yes, yes.
Hey, we hit, we're back?
Well, not, let's wait for Ms. Bueker. She did go downstairs to the restroom.
Oh.
No, it's normal.
Yeah. Act of order, it is three twenty-five, uh, PM. Where we stand, where were we?
I believe the, the motion that was made did not, uh, was, well, we don't have a current motion on the floor.
We need a motion, okay.
It was voted, yeah. The question is, do you accept any other motions, or do you close the case and move on? And that's up to you, Chairman.
All right, uh.
Mr. Vanoy, before we entertain a motion, in some types of cases, we have to demonstrate hardship to, is this one of those cases as well? Like, this zoning would fall under, this ruling would fall under a hardship to the business owner, or is this not one of those cases?
I don't think it's one of those cases.
I don't think it's.
I, I don't know.
Legal?
So there is a standard, though, if you're going to overturn a decision of the director. Um, it says, and this is out of the code, section two oh six that we're under, "The zoning board of adjustment shall modify or reject their interpretation only if it is not supported by substantial competent evidence, or if the interpretation is deemed contrary to the intent and purpose of the comprehensive plan, this zoning ordinance, or the official zoning map." So if you're going to overturn a decision, that would kind of be the standard that you have to meet to do that.
Can you read that one more time?
Sure. "The zoning board of adjustment shall modify or reject the interpretation only if it is not supported by substantial competent evidence, or if the interpretation is deemed contrary to the intent and purpose of the comprehensive plan, this zoning ordinance, or the official zoning map."
Is there any other thing we're unaware of?
There may be lots of them.
Yeah, well, you're the, you're the, like I said, I want a legal opinion. I want a legal, I'm asking for a legal opinion. I'm not getting it. I'm, it's getting kicked down, getting kicked down, see. So that's part of this, right? Is that what you're saying? And you had to look it up?
Yes.
You had since some member to do that?
I'm sorry?
Man.
No, I don't have that memorized. I'm sorry.
Well, just call diligence, due diligence on this case. This is different for this board.
The ordinance is publicly available on the website anytime you'd like to look at it, sir.
But you had to look it up.
Yeah, I don't have it memorized. I'm sorry.
I know, I know.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, tabling it does, gives us more time. I.
Gives them some more time to put their stuff together for what your question you just asked.
I understand, but he answered it.
So she doesn't want to table it? They're not recommending tabling it? I think that if we make a vote, then we make the vote.
This is not our usual force of business.
I understand, I understand. That's why I asked my question, because usually you have to, you have to show undue hardship.
There's about three other things I got to do, but.
I think there's six total, yes, sir, mhm.
But that's, you know, we're going by the letter of the law here. And, uh, there's not a case out there, except there's evidently two operating under CN and, uh, already. And, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go by the letter of the law based on interpretation. Uh, I'd like, you know, ask, is there any more case studies from anywhere else about this interpretation? I'd ask all kinds of questions before we could present it.
My understanding, though, Mr. Vanoy, is this would be a moot point if it was vape and tobacco and something. Or, I'm sorry, not a moot point per se, it would be reconsidered favorably or unfavorably, but it would get the chance to be reconsidered.
Absolutely.
What are the chances with it being reconsidered, that it would get approved with it being just general retail and not specified as vape and tobacco?
We would just have to do the evaluation. We'd have to look at the, if they modified their application or submitted a new application, we would evaluate that application based on the questions that are answered.
Any more questions? Well, I'm waiting for a motion. If not.
I don't have any problem making a motion. That, I'd like to make a motion that, gotta figure out how to word it. Let's see, they recommend denial of the appeal. I would like to recommend we support the appeal, uh, to allow vaping and tobacco only, because it's, it's a miscategorization within the retail sales category. It, it's plain and simple. It, it's just, take the, take away vape and tobacco and put in t-shirts. You wouldn't have a problem at all. You'd be, we'd be jumping up and down to pass this thing. I recommend that we do not support the denial. That's my motion.
We know what votes can go, but, uh, uh, no, no, it's vape, it's a hot button item. It's, uh.
That has nothing to do with it, nothing to do with it.
I'm just discussing, that's fine.
Take out, take out vape and tobacco and change it to, to allow retail sales only.
That's fine.
It, it doesn't matter that it's vape and tobacco. God, I hate to say that.
Just clarify, the motion is to overturn the decision.
So if he, if he motions to overthrow, if he motions to approve it, and there is one nay, and it doesn't happen.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that just takes one vote to do a nay, and it doesn't happen when obviously.
There's a motion, do I have a second?
And just to clarify, it is to overturn the decision of the director.
Correct.
Okay.
There's a motion, do I have a second? Is this a time period I had to wait, or what? Tell me.
It's your discretion.
Well, y'all gonna serve dinner? Levity. All right.
But I'm understanding you said t-shirts. Uh, again, hear me, I don't.
I didn't say t-shirts.
If we had a t-shirt only sales, we'd be jumping up and down for joy. I don't disagree. I personally would be jumping up and down for joy if it was tobacco, vapes, and, just like across the street. And so, um, I, I don't, I, I just think it could be, I, I don't know. Does it, is it that much on the business owner to look at an other vein of retail?
Not, not our job to make that.
Again, I understand, I understand. I'm just, I know.
Not our job to make that call. Our job is to decide if retail sales could possibly include vape and tobacco, just like it includes t-shirts, candy, gum, anything else. And.
But only.
Y'all are telling me it doesn't, for whatever reason, it doesn't.
I think that's where the specification comes in, when it says only. It, he may have verbalized that, but actually on the application, it does say retail sales.
Okay, okay.
And if you.
And on the application, it says retail sales.
That's what I'm saying, is we don't get to specify.
But the city has decided to pull that and include.
Independence on a conversation or.
I think that's wrong.
So I am going to make a motion on something that I just.
Hold on a second. Hold on, do I, I need to, what do I need to do? I've never run across this before, and there's a motion.
The motion fails, most likely a second.
It died, yeah.
It died. Okay, so I was not gonna make a motion to do this, but I am going to make a motion to table it until March the third at our next meeting, so that we can clear our minds and, and stay on focus as to what exactly we need to be voting on.
Is that the motion?
That's my motion, yes, sir.
Motion on the table to table?
I will second that.
There's a second?
I heard it.
And he started it? Uh, okay, any discussion before we ask for the vote?
Ms. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Is there any specific information you or other board members would like?
We don't know yet.
I, Brandon, I want to go personally, I want to read through this more than just, um, five minutes, and I wanted to make sure that I was paying attention when each of the presenters were presenting, and not be distracted by this, these documents that we were given today. So I want more time to go over that.
Okay, and at the next meeting, we will have that in the packet, and.
Thank you.
The applicant, if there's anything they want considered, I think we could have that labeled as well.
Thank you. I think that would be very beneficial.
I think that is fair play. But, okay, motions on the table, discussion, there came discussion from the attorney, discussion with the board members about this. If there's not, I'll go to the vote. Ask for the vote.
All in, oh, I second it.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm like, aye.
Okay, there being no more discussion, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor for the, uh, table motion, say aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, it's been tabled. Thank you. We are now moving on to item number, or whatever it is, wherever my agenda is, under the pile of, oh, number five, division report.
No report today, Chairman.
Okay, number six, item number six, our next meeting agenda. The next regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustments is scheduled to begin at one thirty PM on Monday, March third, twenty twenty-five, in the City Hall East Mezzanine Meeting Room. And item number seven is adjournment. Do I?
Make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion for adjournment, and there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Meeting is closed.
Snack, I had a little lunch, I need a.